Okay, good evening everyone. Thank you. First item on the agenda, report on the barbecue for job training levels and recommendations. Senator Dickerson, would you comment?
The Department of Community Development received two requests for qualifications for job training, one from its state neighbors, the other one from a faith-based initiative. It is my recommendation to award both, splitting the grain in half was an agreement for one year.
Why was that?
It was split last year also.
And is that because what was qualified or something?
Well, well, all are qualified and I didn't want to give one more than the others. They all do a great job. I just wanted to make sure that they both receive funding.
So.
It worked out in the past, yeah.
They also bring, they also bring a slightly different approach to the type of job training opportunities that are available to those faith-based initiative groups as some programs really have, you know, different benefits, you know, they, they both train young people, especially to be prepared for the job markets. They need to bring different counsel, but I think that the standard recommendations is sadly that.
Thank you. We're mission's whole voice.
Thanks. I don't know if we agreed to extend solid waste disposal contract. I don't know if it says, show here, okay, go. All right, so at the, those of you who may have been at the last meeting, we had an item on the agenda to go out for bid for our solid waste contract currently, but Delisa, who's in the audience this evening, does that work for us? Angela Ruffini does an excellent job. The question of whether the government of the last meeting is going out to bid or whether we have the right to extend the contract, I mean, the existing agreement gives the city the right to extend that contract additional two years. And after analyzing several items, one is, I think the first is the level of service that we are receiving at Asbury Park now, which is compared to just in the 10 years that I've been in that free park, the level of service that we have gotten from the county, which has become close to what Delisa is doing. And then the other is the cost factor, what Delisa is offering for the extension. This, by the way, is, is something that really is at the discretion of the city to make this and, and, and based upon service and cost, which is the two major indicators that I would, that I would measure in both of those cases. What Delisa is offering is to extend the contract at its existing level. I mean, we know that gas, labor, materials, all of that is going up and they're offering to keep the contract at the existing level. And one of the other pieces that I took into consideration with this is, you know, the Asbury Park is traditional labor community and one of the measures that the state of New Jersey places on Asbury is a memorandum of understanding is we are allowed to extend contracts as long as the price point stays the same. That's a measure that is in our memorandum of understanding and it's one that we are required to adhere to. The offer that's being made by Delisa meets that state qualification as well. So based upon that criteria, it is my recommendation that our city attorney's able to contract, our city's attorney has evaluated it, can't find a certain consultant based upon all of that analysis, it's our joint recommendation to.
And I'd like to make a statement because I'm a girlie, 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 Steve. Yes. People that are working out there toward Delisa, they are excellent. I mean, I'm very pleased with their service.
Okay, so then we would discuss the regular meeting. Yeah, council, I did prepare a resolution which would extend that contract for a two-year period, another part of your package. And with your permission, then we will move that forward for your consideration during the rate of enforcement, thanks council. Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Tom Gilmore, presented in front of Congress.
Good evening. We have a few special ones. We have one in money application. It'll take place actually this year, October 22. We have an application of the board of ed, actually we guys work for our school, excuse me, to have oncoming parade. This is a record we've done in the past, it's considered by the special events committee, also it's great idea. Thank you. The next one is certificate to annual Asbury Park holder bear race. It's a race that we've done for many years and it's part of the event. She's a woman.
That's part of the, you know, the council.
Yes.
You have to do it once.
Yes, the president.
He promised that you would.
And the last one is.
Everybody knows Elliot's dead.
Yes.
Very dead. I know Elliot.
Exactly. Great.
Can I ask a quick question about the wedding? Why, I think we should do something, how many thousand dollars?
Um, it's really been a hundred, I'd say for maybe two years or so.
Is that?
It was, it was originally, it was $50 for the application fee, $50 to use the beach at park. And then we raised it. I don't know if it was last year or two years ago, $200, it was $50. It was two years. We're, we're in the process of reviewing all the special events.
Yeah, I'd be curious why the council are pulling, and you can trade on target.
We'll check that out too. The last one we have on the agenda is Asbury Park After School, off purpose, this is a charter academy, as I'm, as it hasn't been done by a special management, but we have talked a little bit about this before we do it, since this is on the date, we would get it from the council, it should, it's okay. Okay. We have one other item to take care of tonight. We have two resolutions. First resolution is to ask the council for the authority to go out for our update for the website. We've put together the specs for that, unless they are completed, we'll make sure you got a copy of that, but with my permission, it has to go out for the government. And then the other resolution is a resolution that the city order to go out, that the council has to pass the resolution, actually accept the UBC funds, since they're not awarded the current portion.
The amount, the mayor council's $32,686.11.
Yes, yes, but it has, it's a little bit higher than that now, as I said, it's got two loans that are paying us back, so we actually have another deposit since I pulled it, which is less, there's a difference, so Alice has today is $32,613.61. Basically, we get an equivalent of $127.30.
Yeah, it's a third to.
Yes, yeah.
As Tom has indicated, authorizes the city to accept that sum from the UBC and we'll hear about that to be used in connection with the website services. That will be going on our. So with your permission, we will send two resolutions forward for your consideration, whether right in the portion of the time. Thanks, Tom. Next item on the agenda is our fire safety, we have two items, one of which is the OEM office first management presentation, Chief Katty. And would you share with the audience your shirt?
What's wrong with my shirt?
They're on sale.
As part of the nationwide firefighters initiative, firefighters throughout the country are wearing pink t-shirts for the month of October to promote breast cancer awareness. We're also selling shirts to fire station and they are, all the proceeds will go to breast cancer research and awareness.
You want to mention how much they are?
Uh, they're $20 a piece. We have a lot of board.
Two for $40, isn't it?
Yes. Okay, I'll do, tonight to talk about Asbury Park Office Emergency Management. As you know, it's shown in handout, I do have this in PowerPoint four, but I know we're pressed for time and the time would take me to set up everything, I decided to forego that. However, I would like to say that I remain available at another time when there's more time to give the full presentation, I'm available to community groups, anybody that wants me to come by and give the presentation. I, I think that's a better setting where I can field questions and spend a lot of time with people that might want to have a conversation about it. But having said that, I'll begin. This is about four parts. In the beginning, I want to talk about the nuts and bolts of how the office of emergency management is set up by the statewide level, the level required to do it by the state. Then we're going to talk about some of the things that the county is working on as the relevant organization for the latest powers of Mamas County. And then I'm going to talk about our local emergency planning committee, which is basically our local OEM. And then I'm going to talk completely by Hurricane Sandy and some of the lessons learned and some of the successes that we had based on the previous emergencies. The first thing is directive number two, and that basically states that you have to have an emergency management coordinator. That person is appointed by the mayor for a three-year term and they're responsible for the planning, activating, coordinating of the emergency operation. They're also the chair of the local emergency management city. It's, I can't. It's also stipulated that they be a resident of Asbury Park and that they require, they're required to go through about 60 hours of training to. Directive one to continue, the emergency management response is over all, all four phases of emergency, as the planning, response, mitigation, and recovery of any emergency event. They're required to spend 75% of the county meetings, however, they kind of doesn't need to do that. In Asbury Park's case, I am the, the OEM coordinator, the city manager is the OEM coordinator, and I'm basically the guy that goes to those meetings and provides all the information back. The emergency operation plan is required to be re-submitted every four years with any updates and we're required to conduct an exercise every year. Exercises can be very simple, from a paperwork form in front of you, anytime you activate two or more annexes, you just fill out a form and you send that in and that counts as an exercise. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get into that later. There's 16 annexes in the emergency operations plan as the format that is laid out by the state and later in the presentation, I'll talk about what those annexes are, basically different areas of responsibility for different types of emergencies. When you submit the emergency operation plan, according to directive 101, it mandates that each jurisdiction developed have a crew of emergency operations. Directive 104, not in our case, but does permit for joint OEMs, two counties getting up together and have one OEM, but you have to demonstrate the need to do that. And as you did that, each municipality would be required to have their own OEM coordinator. Directive 105 talks about the standardization of senior emergency management concepts. In the post 9/11 world, we come out with this thing called the National Incident Management System, which all the police officers and firefighters, OEM people at Asbury Park went through the training post 9/11. It's, it's pretty intense training, there's different levels for whatever kind of leadership role you're involved in any of these organizations. It was born out of fire service, something the fire services were doing since the 1960s. Directive 79 talks about the duty to evacuate. If we declare in lawful state of emergency and issue a lawful order to evacuate, evacuate, it gives the authority having, having jurisdiction in the state and city of Asbury Park, the ability to find people that don't comply, up to $1,000 or up to $600 in general of evacuation use. New Jersey Civil Defense Disaster Control Act, A9, is the old civil, civil defense system. It predates World War II when we had the submarines off the coast and that still affects today and that's basically the catalyst for why we have offices of emergency management today. Some of the Mamas County OEM, which is run by the Mamas County Sheriff's Department. Some of the things that they do is they help us develop our emergency operations plan and help us with our revisions. They help with debris management, basically any kind of assistance that we may need, they, they help us with. And they're also are linked to the state and are, through the state are linked to people. One of the things that they sponsored is the Register Ready, which is a free service that residents can register for, any special needs residents. In times of emergency, they might have, be on oxygen or have medications that they need, they can register for this Register Ready and it would aid the county in planning their shelters. And they also often hazard mitigation planning. One of the things that we used in a non-emergency event was we used our special event planning support for the bamboo festival. I can tell you from the piece that we used, I don't want to speak through the law enforcement because they, they have some resources also, but the New Jersey EMS passport is all part of the, the, of OEM, all of the, and it was a tremendous success. We had, we had doctors, we must have had 100 different people here who stayed, worked within that area. So that was a nice resource that was available to us for free. They help with the coastal evacuation science, but CARP is the citizens' animal rescue team, it's a response team. It's kind of like a search program, but these are volunteers that come out during emergencies and help with the evacuation of animals that are available to do that, that can be, or need that resource. The county also helps us in giving grants for, for different things, they have this imperial response. They have their own code grant system like the city does, but it's not for the public. It's the code grant between the county and all the local emergency management authorities. Throughout any significant event, most recently Sandy, we were getting updates, alerts constantly, telling us when we're dialing for conference calls and things like that. And lastly, the help of the community emergency response team. We put together a search team here in Asbury Park in 2008, I'm sorry. It was, it was successful in the beginning, I thought, but it, it kind of fell apart, so to speak. It, we just can stay active with it, the members are also cross members with the cops program and I, they spend most of the time doing, you know, citizens on patrol, so. So I think this revisit that though and see if we can take this our best. Again. One of the things that the county had helped with during Sandy was some of the long-term care facilities in planning. Anybody, I'm sure everybody in this room has heard the horror stories about the sheltering. Certainly wasn't a very comfortable place to be in some of the shelters. And that seems to be a common theme with, with these different emergencies, happened during Irene, it happened during the blizzard of 2010. They keep trying to fix it and they, it doesn't get fixed, there's definitely a broken piece there. One of the things that they're looking at now is just contracting the service out. They really seem to have their activator, some of these contractors have this issue against, that's what the county is looking at now. So review of some of the larger emergencies that we have, as I mentioned, the blizzard of 2010, Hurricane Irene in 2011, tropical storm Lee, which didn't really want to be any kind of a threat, there was a lot of pipe leading up to it, up to it to be paralyzed. And then of course, Hurricane Sandy, which I'll get into in a little bit. Well, the, our emergency planning committee is set up in 16 different annexes, as I stated earlier. And I'll read out the annexes and I'll tell you what department head in the city is responsible for those annexes. The learning and warning is the police department, the communications is the police department, but I also had the director of Congress in there because during Sandy, Tom Gilmore did a fantastic job, was part of the communication piece. The damage assessment is engineering and public works, emergency operations centers, deputy OEM coordinator. The emergency public information, which is the same with the communications, it falls under the police in conjunction with the OEM coordinator and city head. Evacuation with social services, fire and rescue is obviously the fire department, hazardous materials is fire department, and emergency medical services, fire department. The law enforcement is obviously the police department, public health, public social services, public works, comes under engineering and public works. The radiological protection, that could be the event for if we ever had any kind of terrorist attack or radioactive place. That is basically a hazardous materials incident with the attitude and that falls under the fire department. Obviously, we're not equipped to deal with something like that, but we have a resource that we can call upon. Resource management is the deputy OEM coordinator, family sheltering, reception and care, and social services, as well as social services. During Hurricane Sandy, leading up to it, our preparation board was, the first thing you hear, the weather forecast, a progression has, has been detected in the South Atlantic. And we keep an eye on it. As it gets closer and develops, there's all these storm tracking was on, as everybody's aware. So we start talking about it at our staff meetings, and I, I left this to say that, say that, but every Thursday morning, the department gets me, in the city manager staff meeting, and it works out really well from the OEM perspective because that's basically the local emergency planning committee meeting every week to discuss all kinds of different topics, emergency management in one of them. So we started talking about it in, in our staff meetings. As it looked like it was going to get closer, we started getting information from the state and from the county, right up until it was pretty obvious, it wasn't going to miss us. We pulled everything together, probably about three, three or four days out. We started planning, planning what we were going to do, learning the schools, Thirby Marshall Schools are primary shelter, sheltering and care center, reception and care center, that's where people go if they move to a shelter if need be. All the while hoping that it would miss us, but as we all know, it didn't, it pretty much, once gave us a corrective. Preparation, all different annexes did what they did. We scheduled extra people to be on duty during the storm as well as the police and public works. Public works did a very good job of removing all the stuff that can become projectiles and high winds from the beachfront, gassing up machinery, making sure all of our equipment is in top performance mode. And then the, we, we kind of added this back and forth, what we were going to do without mandatory evacuation, we declared it in state of emergency, but we had conversations about mandatory evacuation. Early, we strongly advised people to evacuate and we didn't want to be in a little boy who cries wolf's finger with the mandatory evacuation. And we were criticized a little bit for that, for not doing it sooner, but I felt that the strong advisory to evacuate was good. And then in the end, when down the shore, the different communities started issuing mandatory evacuation notices, we talked about it, we decided to do that. It's very difficult to enforce that with everything else going on, you just hope people have the sense enough to stay a far away, but it's, it's truly difficult to enforce something like that with everything else going on, chasing some guy that wants to build an ocean or something like that. During the event, we responded to a lot of calls for assistance as well as the police department, as well as public works, which is getting lapped over in different things. At the height of the event, when the winds just got too, the winds got too, too strong for us to be out, over anything over 50 miles an hour, theoretically, they could flip over a fire apparatus. We basically hunkered down inside the firehouse and we said we wouldn't respond until the wind died down, but of course, that was going to get a case by case basis. In the aftermath, when the storms started to head, everybody went out and just started trying to gather information and put things together. We found that it was, the entire city was completely without power and the next day we had a fire in the emergency backup generator, the Asbury Towers, which completely made their emergency service, their elevators, their heat in the common areas been like completely blown, which necessitated us to evacuate, people had decided not to heed the mandatory evacuation. I got to give a lot of credit to everybody, obviously my firefighters, the police officers, the state police, I'm helping people out, but a lot of people were there, physically parried seniors that couldn't walk down, in some cases, you know, over 20 stories. If that wasn't enough, seven days into the power outage, the emergency generator at the water treatment facility had broken down. That's a major emergency. As people in town are aware, we issued a code red message for people not to use their water. That was interpreted as if there's something wrong with the water supply, but there wasn't. We just wanted to control the flow going to the plant until we were able to figure this out because it wasn't helping anymore with. Through contact, getting lucky, and guys working extremely hard, we were able to get the power restored and the generator back running before we ran into the major all emergency, so that was a blessing. But that'll be one of my recommendations, to take a look at supplying emergency generators for personally different areas and have a work sheet, it's only being one of them. We have applied for grants for that, we have that, that word, we're, we're going to be successful with that. Of course, anytime you have, you know, an urban area with no power for, in some cases, up to two weeks, it creates some law enforcement challenges. People from outside the area just don't want to listen and they, they get out on the beach where it's not supposed to be down there and things like that. I just wanted to take this opportunity to commend the Asbury Park Police Department. They got really creative in how they were going to work with the curbs and things like that and it actually was a, the calls for service were actually slower, they were slower during the power outage than they were normal times. So that's a credit to the Harvard, and a credit to the community, which I'll talk about later. Reception and care, we use a, as I said earlier, we use the Thirby Marshall School for our reception and care center. One of the things we learned from long-term power outages, our emergency backup power, the emergency generator only supplies certain things and it doesn't really work well for us in that type of emergency. The new senior center was a great place to use, except that does not have emergency power, so we were able to rig the plane from the fire department generators to serve food and things there, but that is one of the buildings that we applied for grant to have a backup generator here. We would like to, at some point, provide that place with, with full backup generator power and use that as a reception and care center. And the last I didn't say shelter, we don't have shelters in Asbury Park, shelters are very regulated and very expensive to get, to afford when they meet those regulations. None of the even is, obviously Mamas County have their own shelters, all the sheltering, the certified sheltering is not on the county, what they, county does. certified sheltering stuff on the county, what they, county does. I have a value of good relationships. Anytime there's a statewide organization like this with, you know, tens of thousands of people, it can't help but be a little bit of bureaucracy. When we were trying to get things, we went through this B team system they have, these requests into the computer, and they're still working above that. But I just don't want to undervalue the value of having strong relationships with people. We were able to get more done, both internally inside Hasbury Park and externally by the contact system or cell phones. I was very proud of that. One of the other major challenges that I'm aware of was Monroe Towers with no power. After a while, their water comes from a gravity tank over there. And with no power, it pumps the water to keep filling that gravity tank. They eventually ran out of water, which is tough because a lot of seniors in that building. Boilots don't flush, there's no drinking water, you know, things like that. So that, those are some of the long-term things that have to be powered up for standing. And most importantly, is community involvement. As a local planning committee, we met twice a day, nine o'clock in the morning, six-four o'clock in the afternoon, every day for about fifteen or sixteen days after the storm. And people found out about these meetings, so people started showing up wanting help. And in the beginning, we didn't want to not be all inclusive, but we were a little worried that this might turn into, we didn't know what it was going to do. Hard, it would be hard for us to manage, basically. But we let it go and different members of the community would accommodate, offer things that we needed. Before I could turn around, maybe two days later, there's thirty people in the room all offering things, so we didn't know what we could do. And I'm gonna leave people out, and I apologize in advance for that, but people like the Salvation Army, Interface Neighbors, help me out, what is it, Boys and Girls Club, the Housing Department, Madison Markham, I S O R, the Department of Education, the Municipal Alliance, the Chamber of Commerce. It was just, it was, it was.
Got any body members?
Got any body members? It was one of my proudest moments. I've worked for the city in Hasbury Park for twenty-three years. I've loved almost every bit of it. And I got to tell you, that was my proudest moment as a city employee. It was really a, a, a soft reward, I felt more than I could imagine. Just seeing people that, you know, coming to council meetings year in, year out, that are at each other's throat, you know, working, working together. It was truly, it was truly something that the city, I'm very, I'm very proud of that. It does not mean we don't have a lot of work to do and things that we can improve on. Sheltering, that is not something that we do, although we do the reception and care, we need to work in that, but the county needs to do a better job on the sheltering piece and they're aware of that and we make sure they don't forget that. The evacuations, in the beginning, went somewhat smoothly, but all the evacuations were done by county buses. And it was a pretty big undertaking and we think that could be improved upon a little bit. Communications, that was really bad for us as far as public safety goes. We had our radios and whatnot. We had a cellphone carrier, which all group named, that did not, the service was horrible during Sandy, but people that had personal phones with a different carrier had no problem talking from the same carrier using different phones. So we switched back, the city switched back to that carrier and we don't anticipate having any problems in the future. We talked about the Chamber of Commerce, but they were, Jackie Pappas came to the meetings every morning and she did a great job keeping the business community informed, which was, turned out was a very key piece. Tom Gilmore, he did a really good job of updating stuff on the city website. That's about all I have to say about that, except some of the things I'd like to see is, emergency power at the senior center, City Hall to include the police department, and the water machine facilities. One of the things I'd also like to take a look at, well, I have taken a look at it, but funding is not available for this, but O E M can get a special deal tied with AM Radio Station, which can broadcast messages twenty-four hours a day, twenty-four hours a day. It's just like the code red message, except it's handled, you can, you can give announcements all the time. As we know with the code red, you use up your allotted minutes pretty quickly, it's like having a cellphone. And the more messages you put out, the longer they are, you start eating up those minutes and if it's, if you go above what your plan allows, you get charged pretty heavy with overages. If you get a better plan, it's much more expensive. So that's, those are some of the things I'd like to take a look at. That's my presentation. If you have any questions.
I have a couple little ones and then maybe, and then, just like basic ones, with the, when there was a snowstorm, we had that, 2011, we had that snowstorm, is there a designated route that you guys decide to get in and out of the city that you'll plow first? And these are the questions I'm curious about.
We try to keep Third Avenue open. And the reason we keep Third Avenue open, it's not, well, the people on Third Avenue might disagree with me, but it's a local road where people that commit suicide scenes and stuff don't usually use, hence the, by the traffic jam, if they're working in the firework and that area. It's a great shot for us to get from pretty much anywhere in Hasbury Park out to the hospital, that we run, hospital to hospital with the animals. Where we're on the southwest side of town, it's Spring Avenue, Memorial Tribe, or any of those sites you should go through, we can get down Route Thirty-Three, or take Stroud Road, that's the road.
So in a storm, you'd say, so Third Avenue is the first store that generally speaking you guys would mind?
Well, I.
Or D W.
We, we, we meet, D W only discussed that, there was a storm pending, given a storm pending. The storm in 2010 was spelled the way you're, it just, I mean, you heard us. You know, it's difficult to compare it or something like that.
And then, just another question. So when, when, whether it's Sandy or a snowstorm, is there, so is there a designated place that people should go to get information, should it be City Hall, should it be fire department, please, if all phones are out and there's no, you don't have, I was one of the people who had the terrible phone line, right?
We, during Sandy, we were putting some of the messages on the city's message board, where it had power. The city website, the fire department website. I started tweeting things on the fire department Twitter account. I mean, any, any way we could get messages to that, of course, obviously code red, but that's why I feel strongly about this S T C emergency management, AM Radio Station. I think that that's something that, that most people would have access to.
But, and is there a designated spot people should go? So like, let's say, something happens, the next day, there's debris in the street, whoever did evacuate. In order to get information, is there a, and maybe that's like a conversation that you and I have about maybe having a designated spot that people could go to either, if they don't have access to a phone or the internet, that they can go to City Hall and there'll be one person there picking up information.
That's something that, during the emergency, we kind of ad hoc did that, and we made sure all the program that was, a hard copy was given to the police officer at the desk down here, to the desk watching the fire station also. So, you know, fire stations and police headquarters, that's where you go to emergencies, we make sure that those places have issue. And then we also opened up the Straywood Center, where we did meetings with, like, qualms in their medical, with the Interface Neighbors, and I think we did over six hundred people a day out of that. So I think those three main locations that some county get information during any type of disaster, the place to go, police fire, and our community center.
Yeah, that's really my thought.
Well, as far as the, moving this forward, as I said earlier, I remain available to do, according to that presentation, have conversations with any community group that would like me to do so.
Chief, I have a question. If there was a mass evacuation by car, we know Third Avenue, we know Spring, when we get to Route Thirty-Five, where would the traffic be controlled and who would be directing the traffic?
If it was a mass evacuation, which we did not have, we would end up going to Route Thirty-Three and they would put, and Route Sixty-Six, and they would have what they called the contra flow, but they would move all ages, would be moving westward. And question, the obvious question is, where?
So the objective, you'd be on Route Thirty-Eight and Route Ninety-One?
Uh, Route Thirty-Three West and Route Sixty-Six, obviously, there is a, and I ask that question because the county doesn't actually have to, and I ask the question, where are we evacuating to? The answer is always from there. I, a lot, there's a lot of questions that come up in these types of events and it's my experience that, I think they're a little tight with some of the information. They have plans, but they don't release it until the actual event happens because they want to focus on what they want people to do. And they have so many different avenues to travel, so to speak, and they're played for. They don't want to confuse the issue. I don't know that the answer is West and what I'm planning.
Can you go east?
Yeah.
And with the office of emergency management, so you're the deputy, Terry's the director, and then, like, I'm guessing Mark was like the key part of it?
Mark, I believe, played, he and Terry Sheen, and he handled the different annexes that the police department was responsible for, I think, it was a level, something like that. And I just like to say, I was right, we were such coordinator and then dip, and then the annex is that the chief went through, everyone's responsible for their, their responsibility for the large title, other than that, that can be responsible for this annex, so.
So then, so consequently, I'm only thinking of Mark's part, so then, is it Kelsa? Is it Kelsa?
Yeah, I had a conversation with Kelsa.
Thank you for everything you can do in this time. Because I was asked, those meetings were fifteen days, and actually, I went twice a day just so I could empower Keith and White, but to watch them fill up, the community people today, working close to people that he never wanted to be with, so the comments, some of the churches coming in, the diocesan showing up to clothe people, it was a remarkable time for the community to come together.
I just like to add that, one of the, a few days into it, one of the most difficult things to do was to manage all the donations that were coming in. We had to take over the gym, some of the startups and where I was. But thank you and I really like the fact that the community, because that's what I want to do.
Good job. Thank you. I'm glad you wanted to generate the A F G grant, I know you were just, kind of on board stuff, you know, that is.
We applied for a grant in 2012 for technical rescue equipment, it's a water rescue equipment. I don't have, I don't have the integration in front of me, but it's a ninety-five, it's a, it's a thirteen thousand one hundred dollar grant for equipment. The federal government covers twelve thousand four hundred forty-five dollars of that, and the city shares six hundred and fifty-five dollars. So we've been really successful in these grants over the years. Now I'll just give a shout out to Lieutenant Sheen Tommy Rodd, who's my grant guy, he does a fantastic job for this. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, I present the buyer, City Engineer Joe Cunha. He's working with the San Francisco Department of Reconstruction, and the other is N J D S Finance for the Memorial Tribe, Joe Cunha. So by way of production, Joe Cunha, he's in on the, on the bid of the South Boardwalk. Originally a committee meeting on my request, if everybody was going to be, just put out the reconstruction of the Boardwalk bid and then, and then they were there. Joe has had a meeting with these gentlemen, I guess it's been a while, my name? Yesterday, sorry, yesterday. I don't know, let them walk you through this, but they approached Joe in terms of, I mean, the best way to say this, lessons learned from our part that we had in CSIC Heights and the opportunity to value engineer the reconstruction of the Boardwalk and to apply methodologies for the reconstruction of our Boardwalk that would be more sustainable, more fire resistant, and maybe even less expensive. So with that introduction, Joe, would you introduce yourself and then we'll.
All right, Tom McDermott, I'm with FEMA. I'm with the White. These two gentlemen were very gracious to assist me in analyzing both the sort of land and the Boardwalk regarding specifically mitigation. Essentially, all the work is in both of those facilities as far as damage assessment and covering the damage that was done, putting the estimates together, and we're moving forward towards construction. What these gentlemen are here to help us with is to take a second look at the approaches that we take to restoring these facilities and trying to forward, forward by the future storms and future incidents such as Sandy. So Mr. McDermott is an engineer by trade, working with FEMA and happens to have a concentration in fire protection and fire safety systems, if you will, so. Essentially, what happened is, as we walked the Boardwalk, I guess very much collectively they did as well, the creative wheels returning there, we started coming to a potential design that would actually change the original approach to repair the Boardwalk. And when I say repair the Boardwalk, we're on how phase one is done, and that was from the Seale to First Avenue. This is phase two that we're talking about, as you all, we're layering up the wall. We've almost gone that till this point, drive in between the scenes. Essentially, the traditional, what I'm referring, repair to match the rest of the Boardwalk is what was proposed for phase two, is on, and we really just have sufficient touches to put that up the bit, but maybe that we met yesterday. We're actually considering an earthen-type Boardwalk that would actually be capped in a concrete and for aesthetics, for everyone's, you know, well-being and just good feeling of Boardwalk and continuity. You wouldn't really know the difference at that point because we'd have to really lumber deck just the way the rest of the Boardwalk is. So everything that's going on beneath the Boardwalk would not be readily available to the city guy. You don't have to really know what's going on underneath there. But perhaps the best part of this, in addition to the potential benefits to reduce fire prevention, very reduced fire prevention, is we're looking at a forty percent savings in cost at this time, based on a very rough analysis over the last two days. Both gentlemen were punching numbers all day, as well as myself, and it was a very viable solution. So I'd like to bring that to you, bring that forward tonight. And Tom, I don't know if you want to go into the other details on that. I think you've got everything. The only thing is, if you've got some specific questions, you know, if you want to have any answers.
Well, Joe, you said an earthen-type Boardwalk, is that, did I say the word right?
Yeah, that for lack of a better term. Essentially, we would fill the Boardwalk, elevated upward vertically with either foam fill that we did for Gango's Land or a section of Boardwalk, or a traditional ground. It would really come down to which way would be cheaper and most beneficial time-wise as far as overall cost, but both types are available. The forty percent of it, we're out there, actually, it's one of the more expensive versions, but it's also the easiest version, and probably the better version, which actually won't get on the board deck. The only difference between the board deck over the years, we put a solid concrete cap on it and passive Boardwalk there.
Joe, you have solid Boardwalk. Could you just link with streets?
Absolutely. Phase one, like I said, went from the Seale to First Avenue, and this is the northmost portion of the South Boardwalk, which is essentially less than half by Convention Hall, the Arcade, and Paramount Theater. It goes, we start from the north end of the limits, right from the doors of Convention Hall, the south side, down towards the northeast corner of Fourth Avenue, so roughly, Fourth Avenue. down towards the northeast corner of the North Avenue Pavilion, so around the Ford Avenue, or, or, uh, Ford Avenue. It's basically a E P A Boardwalk, where you see the two different types of Boardwalk. It's the entire section that goes from Ford Avenue to Convention Hall. So walking down the Boardwalk, the boards on the Boardwalk, including the same type of boards that we see on the Boardwalk down. So as you walk down the Boardwalk, that would be, you wouldn't know any difference as far as what we can feel for.
Now, the feeling will be a little bit different. And the reason for that is, is what we're really, what we're really changing is the structural undercarriage. Because it's built up on, if you would like a house, your floor joists. Well, that's what we're, we're removing, is the floor joists, and putting in the foam or fill, pouring the six-inch concrete cap, and then putting the sleepers, which is, uh, to buy, you know, anchor onto that, and then putting the deck on top of that. Some of the benefits from that are, again, pricing, which is everybody's interesting, and it's one. The second thing is, is as it's designed now, the peers basically are taking that area and then taking all of the, the pressure, and basically transferring it off the coast. What you're doing now, you're transferring that across the whole deck. So a couple of things that come out of that is that, again, the emergency services, you really can't drive on that, you know, the Boardwalk as it is now. Or if you do, you're kind of hesitant a little bit, because it's not really designed for, you know, mechanical, you know.
I've experienced that.
Absolutely. Um, and, and again, or even, you know, live grounds. I mean, you know, with the script footage, the design of that, we see a lot of these buildings, and, and, you know, forges and stuff like that, because it's not designed for that kind of capacity. Well, this, you're eliminating that, because it's all solid. And, and, and as Joe says, is that coming back instead of rather using a prowl, which is significantly cheaper than the foam fill. But the foam fill is going to be there permanently, I mean, it's, it's, it's going to hold it. And then the cap on top of it spreads out the space, it's, you know, the weight of that, so it's going to be, uh, all the way. The other part is, is because there's no openings underneath there, there's no ability for the client to be, you know, be there. And one is, it's tricky all the way down, as you've seen this recently. So the, there's a couple of little benefits to that, is the ability to have, you know, emergency vehicles be able to drive on that. Um, again, and be able to get to the, you know, the engine, and stuff, you know, on the beach, and stuff like that. If there was a fire, for that protection, being able to put apparatus on the front of the building, hands going on the back of it. If you're going to any of your I S O ratings and stuff like that, especially if you're an individual that owns the building, the insurance ratings on that, the fire protection connection would be reduced. So it's, it's really a win-win situation all the way along, um, and it's cheap.
So, so on the, if you're sitting outside, if you talk about the feel of the Boardwalk?
It's more solid.
So let's say if you're out there running, you have that?
You have all the, because the decking is going to be this, it's going to be a solid wood deck. But it, it's again, you know, it's, it's going to be much more solid than that, you know, rather than the floor joists, you know, where there's dead plastic.
The, the best example I could give is, uh, basically from the south side corner of the sort of land, north, uh, there is nothing under the Boardwalk at all, sand up to a certain point, but it's essentially what Tom described, uh, boards, shit loading to the joists, out to the beams, out to the floors. And it's south to where it meets the wide part of the Boardwalk. Uh, that's built solid with the forest built. If you jump more on one, jump more on the other, you kind of feel different, so you really have to jump more. One other thing I did want to add is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one other thing I did want to add, this is a, I wanna go to one-time opportunity, but it kind of is, this has to be timed through damage, both by Seana. Uh, so that's why I felt it was important to bring your attention. Also, phase one, what was damaged, what now replaced, I believe, is hollowed in. That is also eligible for forest fill or foam fill to be worn, if we so choose.
I have a, I have a lot of questions, but most of my questions were, was it old? Because it was what we were given to be for this last second adjustment, which I have no problem with the rest of the adjustments. So let me start off with my old questions. Some of them you already answered, some of them segue to new questions. And I appreciate you being there, that's okay, everything. And truthfully, I mean, I'm just processing, it starts like, I, oh, it started three months ago, because the storm skies, a meteor vessel, and that middle town started rebuilding, and we're losing, good must be locked over November. We had no power, which moved we go, losing pressures to it, but, uh, so again, some of my general questions, back to what we were told we were gonna talk about tonight, was whether there'd be, had there been a review of the plans and scope of the work with the council? And which would have included, including the FEMA contribution, city contribution, if any? Has the city contribution was funded in the budget? Uh, do you want me to keep on going, wait for answers, since they seem to be?
Yeah, essentially, uh, we're still at ninety-ten right now. What that means is, uh, FEMA has officially offered a ninety percent match of total costs experienced by the community as well. Uh, the city is still technically on a quarter or close for the ten percent. That is still being debated on the state and federal level. There's a good chance that that will go to zero, will go to one hundred zero, hoping on the short right now. So, uh, that's the way that stands now. Uh, as far as the review with council, I'm not personally, not yet, um, all of these numbers have been solid.
Yes, council?
I thought you said council.
Council, oh, council, oh, council, we, because then they recover form us over the summer. Private capital, this guy. Okay, next question. And it got to go back to moments in our package, I was being a little bit excited. Why is it kind of bidding not RFPs, which you've done before?
I believe RFPs, yeah, this is eligible for RFPs, this is something. Because in RFP, uh, there are, there are certain types of contracts that are eligible for competitive contracting RFP under the local contracts law. And if it doesn't meet one of those specified, uh, items, then it is one that has to go out, it will be competitive, it will have stage one called RFP. We didn't do RFPs, no.
Except for that, okay. Next question is exactly what, of course, on the Boardwalk, it's the industry, questions that answer that. This is, again, going back to the question, proposing for that, that, that.